Things, right? If you have questions, please just drop them in the chat. We save some time at the end to be able to answer anything that you guys might have. Also, I, if there's anyone who's having trouble hearing me, please, again, like, just drop us a note in the chat. You guys can hear me? Alright, so with nothing else to say on that end, then I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna flip it over to Casey to get us started.
Alright, thanks, Justine, and thanks for having me. Can everyone hear me okay? Alright, um, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit today about basic divorce. Divorce can be pretty complex, and an hour would not be enough time. It's taken me 10 years of practice, and I still don't feel like I know every nook and cranny of the divorce practice and process. So basically, what I want to focus on today is just if you are either going through a very basic divorce yourself or assisting someone with going through that process who maybe doesn't have the means to hire an attorney. Obviously, if you're not an attorney, you're not permitted to give legal advice to someone, but you can certainly assist them in providing them with the basic forms that are available in many county self-help centers. This particular presentation is going to focus mostly on Cumberland County. And I would not be an attorney if I didn't start out the presentation with disclaimers. And I'm, there we go. I'm not great with technology, so we might have a couple of hiccups when I try to change slides. You know, a lot of people throughout their marriage have acquired marital assets or marital debts. If you are encountering a situation where the parties have real estate, bank accounts, even individual bank accounts, one spouse makes particularly more than another, that type of thing, and we'll get a little bit more into that. We call them economic issues. You do not want to even begin attempting to point someone in the direction of trying to do this on their own. You want to point them in the direction of a divorce attorney. There are attorneys out there who will take these types of cases pro bono. Someone with lesser resources can always be referred to the local county bar association to be put in touch with one of those attorneys. So that's the first disclaimer. If there are economic issues, this is not for that particular individual. We're only gonna talk about the two major types of divorce. Both of them are a form of no-fault divorce, which basically just means that you don't have to prove fault grounds in order to acquire the divorce from the court. It also means that, like I said, we're not going to be delving into those economic issues. This is just a high-level overview. And it's, of course, another lawyer-like disclaimer. It is for guidance only. It's not to be construed as legal advice. And if you do need legal, legal advice, I do give free consultations. Who does everyone in my office, and we'd be happy to chat. One more disclaimer before we move on to defining what those economic issues are that you want to make sure you get into the hands of an attorney. I'm really not boring. This subject matter is a little boring. It's gonna be a little dry. It's very procedural. I tried to figure out how I could fit in some more stories to make it a little bit more interesting, and it's, it's really just procedure. So I apologize if anyone wants to insert humor. I welcome your comments. And so as far as economic issues go, the, the issues where we want to make sure someone gets into the hands of an attorney, someone who knows how to help them navigate these economic issues, that's any property that was acquired during the marriage that's jointly titled. It's even maybe sometimes people buy their house before they get married, and that's jointly titled. If there's any property that's in both of their names, they definitely want to consult with an attorney. If there is property that they've acquired during the marriage that's in their individual name, that likely is also marital property. That's, you know, even a bank account in your individual name or a bank account that you've deposited money into in your individual name during the marriage, that still very well may be marital property and subject to distribution in a divorce for either party. So make sure they get into the hands of an attorney. Other things, retirement accounts, the only things that really aren't, well, and actually, I should say more, some things that may not be expected that would be joint marital property. Retirement accounts, lottery winnings, some legal settlements, some things that you may not think about that are just coming to one spouse individually that would be subject to distribution in the marriage. You know, basically, everything except for an inheritance that was only given to one party and kept in their individual name and gifts that were only given to one individual party and kept in their individual name. Anything else? If there's any question, just get them in. A lot of family law attorneys like our firm do free consultations, so at least someone to tell them whether or not they need to delve into some, some more serious planning. Other thing, just a little bit more on the no-fault divorce and the fact that we're not talking about fault divorce today. One common misconception in for people who are getting ready to file for divorce is that fault grounds mean more than they do. What they do mean is if you have an alimony issue, which is support that is paid from one spouse to the other after the divorce is final, which, again, we're not really getting into today. Fault grounds may come into play for that scenario. The other is if you have one spouse who is very resistant to the divorce, and you have a reason why you need to move it forward quickly, and there may be fault grounds, that is a reason to establish fault grounds. What fault grounds do not do is establish a reason why one spouse would be entitled to more of the marital estate than the other. So that's a lot of times, you know, we, when we do consultations, we have people who come in and say, you know, he or she cheated. I wanna take them for everything they're worth. You, you really can't. That's really not an option. It's, it, there are several factors that are taken into consideration when distributing the marital property, whose fault it was is not one of them. So the two main types of divorce that we'll talk about today are called a 3301(c) mutual consent divorce and a 3301(d) irretrievable breakdown divorce. When we file for divorce, and I will get into this a little bit more, we generally file under both of those grounds and only both of those grounds when we file the initial divorce complaint. Because our first option is that (c) mutual consent divorce, and if that fails, then the second option is the (d) irretrievable breakdown divorce, which we have a little bit of a longer waiting period to get to. You do not need any consent from the other party in order to get that type of divorce as long as there are no economic issues. So a little bit more on the 3301(c) divorce, the mutual consent divorce. The statute is written, and this is actually just a pretty much a regurgitation of the statute. The court may grant a divorce where it is alleged that the marriage is irretrievably broken and 90 days have elapsed elapsed from the date of commencement of an action under this part or an affidavit has been filed by each of the parties evidencing that each of the parties consents to the divorce. The consent of a party shall be presumed where that party has been convicted of committing a personal injury crime against the other party. So that second part, that's a newer addition to the law, and that is not something that we're gonna get into today, but I do understand there are probably some people in this presentation who would have some interest in that. I'm happy to talk about that after. But essentially, the way that this 3301(c) divorce works, and again, I will go through the process in more detail. You file for divorce, you serve the other party, and then you wait 90 days. And then there are forms that you and the other party can sign and file with the court, and then the court enters a decree. It's really the most simple type. If you have two people who are amicable and in agreement to getting divorced, this is the process that you would want to, to follow, and it, like I said, this is always our first choice. Even when you have the economic issues, a lot of times, if we do have an amicable couple, we try to work out those economic issues within that 90 days and then hopefully finalize for divorce after 90. I will be honest. Most divorces don't finalize in 90 days from the date of filing, but in a perfect world and under the terms of the law, they can. And then the other type of divorce that we're talking about is the irretrievable breakdown, no consent. This is the alternative way that we file. What this means is if the other party won't sign those forms necessary to finalize the divorce, then after a year, one of the parties who wants to move the divorce forward can indicate that they have been separated for a year and that there are no economic claims pending, and they want the court to enter a divorce. They then have to give the other party an opportunity to respond. And upon another 20 days passing with no response, there's another document to file. We'll get into all this. And then if no response 20 days after that, then you can actually file to finalize. There is actual service upon the person required throughout all of these processes, so you actually do have to make sure the other person knows that there's a divorce happening. So getting into the procedure a little bit, and I know Angelina had sent out, just before we got started, a packet of forms. All of those forms are labeled in the upper left-hand corner to correspond with this presentation. Just the packet in and of itself isn't gonna be very descriptive for you, but each of these slides does actually explain how you're using the form and when. So if anyone wants the PowerPoint presentation as well, we can provide that. So a little bit of background for filing for divorce. In order to file for divorce in the state of Pennsylvania, at least one of the parties to the divorce has to have been a resident of Pennsylvania for at least six months. All divorces are initiated the same way. You file a divorce complaint. You are going to select the county to file your divorce complaint. You can either do that in your home county, which is where either of the parties resides, or you can do that in another county by consent of both parties. You may question why you would want to file in a county where you don't live. If you're doing this type of divorce, this, no assets, no debts, no economic issues, you're just divorcing. Some people like to file in a different county because there are two or three counties in Pennsylvania that charge a much lower filing fee. The last time I checked, I think the filing fee in Potter County, Pennsylvania, is between $80 and $90, whereas our filing fee in Cumberland County, as of right now, if you're not filing additional counts in divorce, is $400. So it's a big difference. If you don't have to litigate economic issues and you're sure you're not going to have to, some people do like to file in a different county just to save a little bit of money. One other little side note regarding the filing fee. If someone qualifies economically to file in Forma Paporus, they can file, they can have the filing fees waived. I do not know, and I looked and tried to find what the, if there's like a threshold cutoff for income to qualify for in Forma Paporus, and I couldn't find the answer. It looks like it might be discretionary. But there is a petition to file, to file in Forma Paporus to have those fees waived. It's pretty detailed. One has to enclose or include all of their income, any household member's income, assets, all of that. That form is pretty easy to find online, but again, I'm happy to share it if anyone wants it. That is not in that packet that Angelina sent. But that is one way to get fees waived if someone qualifies financially, because $400 is a lot. It's a lot more convenient to file in Cumberland County. You can file online in Cumberland County. You can't do that in Potter County. And obviously, if they're local in the Carlisle area, you can just walk into the courthouse instead of mailing everything up to Potter. So, and I, I should also mention, in no matter what county in Pennsylvania you're filing in, the proper filing office for the divorce complaint is the perthonitaries office. The very first thing, and if you do have that packet handy and you want to turn to Form A, that is the divorce complaint. The first page of the divorce complaint is the notice to plead. It is mandatory that you attach this to your divorce complaint when you're filing and serving it on the other party, or when you get to the end of the divorce. If that was not attached to your filing, they may not allow you to finalize the divorce. So that's a good example. You'll notice the areas that are highlighted are the areas that need to be filled in by the litigant. There are two areas that are highlighted that are already filled in. That is the Cumberland County Courthouse address and also the address and contact information for the Cumberland County Bar Association. These two things are specific to whatever county you're filing in, so you would wanna make sure if you're not filing in Cumberland that that is corrected. So the actual complaint itself, if you turn to the second page of that Form A, there's a lot of highlights on this page. There's a lot to fill in. The first thing is the caption, which was also on the notice to plead. You wanna make sure that's filled in with the county where you're filing, as well as the litigant's name and the defendant's name or the plaintiff's name and the defendant's name. The plaintiff is the person who's filing. The defendant is the person who's receiving. You're going to title it as divorce under Section 3301(c) or 3301(d) of the divorce code. That is, as I just explained, when I was explaining the difference between C and D, that is so that if C fails, we can have D kick in and take over after a year has passed. You're gonna go ahead and, under number one and two, fill in who is the plaintiff, that person's address, including their county. Also, the defendant's name, that person's address, including the county. You're going to indicate which of the parties has been a resident of Pennsylvania for at least six months. Number four is where the parties were married, where and when, I should say, the parties were married. And it is helpful. I don't actually have this on the form, but because of the fact that you may end up having to file under D after they've been separated for a year, it is helpful here if you also put the date of separation, if there is one. And we'll talk a little bit more about the date of separation when we get to the 3301(d) divorce in a little bit more detail. The next is you are going to indicate whether or not the parties have children, minor children. You will include only the children's initials. There is actually a form that you'll complete that gets filed with the divorce complaint that contains the children's full names. In the event there are children. That is so that that form that has the children's full names gets sealed because this is a public record, and anyone can go on and find that these parties were, or these children, you can't, you can't shield the party's names, but you can shield the children's names from being part of that public record. One side note. Some people do file for custody at the same time that they file for divorce. That's not uncommon. Again, I'm not talking about custody today. I'm just talking about divorce. But you can raise a custody count in a divorce complaint if that's appropriate. The next, number six, you do have to indicate whether or not you've ever filed for divorce from this person before, or whether this person has ever filed for divorce from you before. In the event that there is a past divorce action, it's very important that you include the past caption, the docket number, the date filed, the grounds for divorce, and the current status of that divorce. It's key that the current status of that divorce is that it's no longer active for one reason or another. If you still have an active divorce pending in another county or another state, you need to get that withdrawn, closed out, if you want to proceed under this divorce. Alternatively, if that's already open, just proceed in that, wherever that location is to get it wrapped up. Next, you're going to indicate whether any party is a member of the Armed Forces on active duty. If that person is a member of the Armed Forces on active duty and they are not available to personally accept service of the divorce complaint, you likely will not be able to proceed with the divorce because there is a law that protects active-duty service members because they need to know what's happening, and oftentimes, it's impossible to contact them to inform them. The other thing is you need to indicate whether or not the parties have an agreement already for economic claims. This comes up if maybe somebody entered into an agreement for resolution of their economic claims before filing for divorce, or if they had a prenuptial agreement. Again, we're not really getting into that, but it still needs to be in the divorce complaint when you file it. Both parties need to be advised that counseling is available. Marital counseling is available. They can request up to three sessions. Typically, the county courthouses keep a list of the counselors available to provide this service. And you need to indicate when you file for divorce that either you are aware or your client is aware that they are entitled to request this and whether or not they request it. The other party then has the opportunity to request it as well. Then you need to indicate which section you're filing under. I'm sort of, I've gone over this several times, file for both. You wanna file for C and D. You'll see under 10B, the 3301(d), the language that's inserted there is the marriage of the parties is irretrievably broken, and at the appropriate time, plaintiff will submit an affidavit stating that the parties have been living separate and apart for a period of one year. This confuses everyone because if you're filing and you just separated yesterday, like, well, I haven't been separated for a year, but the key is, the language says at the appropriate time, you'll file an affidavit saying that you've been separated for a year. So it's absolutely okay to include this language in the divorce complaint if you haven't already been separated for a year. And then the final verment that goes into the divorce complaint is asking the judge to enter a divorce decree. You're gonna need to make sure that you sign it. That signature needs to include your printed name, your address, your phone number, your email address, all the ways that the court or the other party can reach you. The next page is a verification page. Just about everything that you file with the court should contain one of these verifying that everything in the pleading is true and correct to the best of your knowledge. It's sort of like a sworn affidavit. And then the final page of the divorce complaint is the certificate of compliance. Again, this is attached to every filing with the perthonitary. I will say of the packet, I, I believe this is the only document where I actually attached a example of the certificate of compliance. But if you are filing or helping someone file, make sure that every pleading has one of these certificates attached to it. It's just indicating that you're complying with rules for public access. This goes back to what I mentioned about the children's names only being listed as initials in the divorce complaint and not actually spelled out. That's a more recent, within the last, I'd say, maybe six or seven years, a more recent rule that has gone into effect to protect children. There's also, on that note, there's also a section of that form for victims of abuse who have been determined to have, there's been a finding of abuse by a court. So if there's a protection from abuse order, something along those lines, where you're putting the plaintiff's or the defendant's address on that first page, you can exclude the address from the divorce complaint itself, and you can fill it in appropriately on the confidential information form that can be filed with the divorce complaint so that the court can have the address, and the court will seal the address in the perthonitaries office, but the opposing party does, if, if the opposing party particularly is the offender, then that person does not receive the address. So service of the divorce complaint. Once you've filled it out and you've paid the filing fee, if you have to, you now have a timestamped copy. So when you take that into the perthonitaries office, you're gonna take at least three copies with you. Your original, the perthonitary is gonna keep that one. And then you're gonna take two copies as well. The perthonitary is gonna timestamp those two and give them back to you. One of them you wanna keep for your records, the other one you will serve on the other party. And of course, if your first attempt at service isn't effective and you've given away that one copy, just make copies. It doesn't have to be, it'll have like a purple timestamp on it usually. It doesn't have to be purple. It can be a copy, just as long as it has the timestamp on it. The divorce complaint must be served within 30 days of filing it at the perthonitaries office. If your defendant is out of state, you do have 90 days. There are, well, a divorce complaint requires what's called original service. So this is, you have a couple of different options. Acceptance of service, where the defendant simply signs a form and says, I acknowledge that I received this document. The other is you can have the person served personally by a sheriff or a process server or actually any other third party, someone who's not a party to the action, an adult who can sign an affidavit saying that they did serve the person, and then that affidavit gets filed with the court. And then the third way is by certified mail, restricted delivery, return receipt requested. You do need to make sure that you get that return receipt and that it has actually been signed personally by the defendant, or it's not valid. So I'm gonna talk about these in a little bit more detail. Form B of the packet is an example of the acceptance of service that the defendant would, would sign. They do need to include their address and contact information for the court and for the opposing party. That then becomes their address of record for service of the future legal documents in this divorce action. All proofs of service need to be filed within 10 days of the acceptance, but I'll go through that on each one. For the acceptance of service, the date that that needs to be filed with the perthonitary is within 10 days of the defendant signing it. So the defendant's gonna sign and date. That date is gonna give you your 10-day mark. So this is something, if you're not filing it electronically through the perthonitaries office, it's a good idea to hand-deliver just so that you know for certain it gets there within the 10 days. Cumberland County is not really strict about this rule, this 10-day rule, but there are a lot of counties that are. And I've actually had cases, particularly during the COVID area, when, era when courthouses were closed, where I was unable to get the acceptance of service filed in 10 days, and they would not finalize my divorce without a waiver of defect in service because I didn't follow the rules. So that's important. Best practice, always have these, these forms notarized, the service forms notarized. The other available option for service, like I said, is the personal service or return of service. This is Form C in your packet. This is what will be filed when you have someone personally hand the documents to the defendant, not, not the plaintiff, but some other third party. Again, this also needs to be filed 10 days from the date that's on here that the person was served. The next form is Form D. This is what you will file in the event of certified mail. The second page is Exhibit A. You're gonna attach your green card with the defendant's signature to Exhibit A when you file it. So once you have effectively completed service through one of these methods, then you're entering your first waiting period. That first waiting period is 90 days. So generally, I say from the date of service of the divorce complaints, the date of service on that, whichever one of those three documents we just discussed, you will wait till the 91st day, and then the parties can sign their consent and waiver. And both parties are going to need to sign this. They cannot date it before that 91st day, or it will not be effective. So in your packet, Form E is the affidavit of consent. Like I said, plaintiff and defendant both sign one of these and file it with the court. Form F is the waiver of notice, and both parties also will sign this. Both of these forms are indicating that there are no further economic issues that need to be resolved. So once these forms are filed, if there are economic claims, they're potentially waived. So it's really, really, really important that if there are any economic issues in a divorce, that those are worked out prior to signing these documents. I said hardly any war stories. I do have one. I met with a client after her divorce had already been finalized. Her husband had sort of navigated the process. They didn't wanna spend the money on an attorney, and they owned a house together. So he managed to navigate this portion of the process, but nobody ever bothered to write up a contract for what they were going to do with ownership of their house. So when you're married, you own a house one way, which is if the wife would pass away, the husband would become 100% owner of that property and vice versa. If you're not married and you own a house together, most of the time, what's going to happen is if the wife passes away, now the wife's estate inherits her share of the property. So the husband is essentially owning this house. If, if wife had children from another marriage, you know, husband's now owning his house that he lives in with these children of the other marriage. So luckily, when this lady came to me, nothing like that had happened yet, and there is a way to navigate separating that real property after divorce, but you lose the protection of the divorce code once that happens. So you have to turn to the court as though you own this house as two unmarried people and file a partition action, which ends up being that this wife was actually entitled to less of the equity in the house than she would have been had this been separated under the divorce code of Pennsylvania. So it's really, really important. Like I said at the beginning, economic issues, don't try to help someone push this through just to get a divorce decree. It's not worth it. You have to sort out the economic issues, either through counsel or through a contract first. Another important note on the consent and waiver forms E and F. They do need to be filed with the perthonitary within 30 days of the date that the party signed, or they go stale and they won't be accepted, or they may be accepted, but they won't be effective in assisting to finalize the divorce. So once you have those two forms signed, you are going to move on to So once you have those two forms signed, you are going to move on to filing the precipy to transmit the record. This can be filed simultaneously with filing your consent and waivers. And this is form G in, G as in good, in your packet for thirty three oh one C divorces only. We'll talk about the thirty three oh one D divorces at the end. They are the same form, but different sections need to be completed. So for a C divorce, at the conclusion of your ninety day waiting period, you have your consents and waivers signed. You're going to go to form G. And you're going to fill out section, well, the first thing you're going to do is you're going to check that you want a divorce decree. Then you're going to fill out section one. You're proceeding under section thirty three oh one C one. You're going to indicate how your divorce was served. Well, when it was served and how it was served, and that goes back to our three options of personal service, acceptance of service, or certified mail. And then you're going to go to section three A. That's when you're going to say when the plaintiff and the defendant signed the affidavit of consent. You're going to skip three B. That's not for this type of divorce. You're going to jump to four. You're going to indicate that there are no related claims pending. The related claims are the economic claims that I've been, you know, pounding away that we're not talking about. We need to make sure if you're finalizing the divorce, that those haven't been raised as additional counts in the divorce complaint. And then for section five, you're going to skip over A and you're going to complete section B. This is going to be the date that the waiver of notice was filed. So if you're filing the precipy at the same time that you're filing your waiver and notice, then you're going to just write here simultaneously with this precipy. An important distinction here, this document wants to know what date the affidavit of consent was signed, but it wants to know what day the waiver of notice was filed, just because they want to make everything more difficult. I'm sure there's a better reason for that, but I don't know what it is. So you're going to then complete that form. You're going to submit that to the prothonitary. One thing that I don't have attached here is the certificate of compliance. There is an example of that attached to the divorce complaint in form A. Make sure that's attached to this as well, as well as to your consent and waiver. Cumberland County does have a form divorce decree that they want to have filed when you're finalizing the divorce and then the judge will sign that. So form H is an example of that divorce decree. Go ahead and fill in the plaintiff and the defendant and you'll have a docket number at that point that can be filled in. And then you're going to fill in your date and the plaintiff's and defendant's names for the court, and then the judge is just going to sign off on this as long as everything else in your divorce was done correctly. Form I is a divorce information sheet that's required by law. You're going to fill in your docket number, your date of marriage, the plaintiff's name and the defendant's name, and then the number of years you've been married. This form is different in most counties. This particular form that I've included is specific to Cumberland County. And then along with your finalization paperwork, if you're filing it in person, you're going to file, you're going to submit two addressed postage prepaid envelopes so that the court can send the plaintiff, the divorce decree and the defendant and notice that a divorce decree has been entered. So that's the C divorce. The D divorce is when the C divorce fails. So if you get to the end of the ninety days and the the defendant, it's usually the defendant, but not always. The defendant doesn't want to sign the consents and waivers because they've gotten upset about something and now they want to make the plaintiff wait. In that case, you have to wait a year from the date of separation. So I want to talk a little bit about what a date of separation means. Date of separation does not have to be the day that the party stopped living together. You can be separated and living in the same house. We have a lot of people who get separated, you know, decide that they want to divorce, make it very clear to one another that this marriage isn't going to continue. That happens in December and no one files for divorce. No one moves out until June of the following year. That happens all the time. That doesn't mean that their separation isn't until June of the following year. If they can clearly establish that their separation occurred in December. And one way that helps in doing that is by including in your divorce complaint, your verment for the date that you separated. Because it doesn't help the other party's case if they haven't answered your divorce complaint and said we aren't separated. So that'll help you to establish that date of separation that you need. The D divorce goes from the date of separation, not the date of service. The C divorce goes from the date of service. That ninety days starts counting from the date of service. Your one year for a D divorce starts counting from your date of separation. So just make sure that's really clear somehow in your pleadings. You, an example of being separated but under the same roof is, you know, some people will stop sharing the same bedroom or stop holding themselves out to their family and friends as a married couple. You know, the family and friends know that they're separated. They're just trying to, to work out, you know, the other party getting their own place or whatever it may be. One thing that I recommend, if you know that you're getting divorced and you're still under the same roof, it's a good idea to file the divorce complaint. Because that helps you to really draw that line in the sand and establish that you are separated even though you're still under the same roof. Likewise, you can be separated, you can be living separately, but you're still holding yourself out to family and friends as being married. You're still sharing finances. You're still sharing bills. You know, you're still engaging in sexual relations, that sort of thing. You may still be married, you fully married, not separated. So there is a lot of nuance that goes into it. So just be aware that, you know, you want to do something in some sort of legal pleading to somehow establish that you're truly separated. That doesn't mean the other party isn't going to fight it, but it's going to help you in establishing that the separation truly occurred on this date. So if you do have to go through with the D divorce at the conclusion of one year since the date of separation, you're going to pull out your form J, and that is your affidavit of separation. This is going to again state what date you separated. Section two is a little bit confusing. This was put in when the law changed. This waiting period used to be two years. Now it's one year. When that change occurred, they changed this form to say that if you were separated before December fifth, two thousand sixteen, you have to have been separated for two years. If you were separated after that date, you have to be separated for one year. You have to check the correct box. I don't know why now we're, you know, coming up on, well, really coming up on ten years since the rule changed. And we're still including this, but it's still there. So for most people, they're going to be checking box B. So you're going to take that form. And then you're also going to take form K. This is a counter affidavit that the other party has the opportunity to file. You're going to take both of these. You're going to file them with the prothonitary's office. And then you're going to have this served on the other party. This is the only document in the divorce proceeding that needs to be filed, or I'm sorry, served with the same formality as the divorce complaint. So those three methods that we went over for how you have to serve the divorce complaint on the other party and file proof of service, you have to do that for this form as well. So that would be personal service with an affidavit of service, an acceptance of service, or certified mail with proof. So once this is been served, filed and served, you're going to wait twenty days. If this counter affidavit is filed by the opposing party within those twenty days at that point, depending on what's checked, what box is checked, it might be a good idea to consult with an attorney to see what the next step is. If it's not filed, then you are going to serve them with form L, which is the notice of intention to file a precipy to transmit the record. This is a pretty basic form. There is only one really highlighted line that you have to fill in. You do have to put the person's name and address at the top of the form. But then you have to fill in the date that is about twenty days after the date that you plan to serve this notice of intention to file the precipy. So just to be safe, I usually make it about four or five days after I'm going to be serving it. Just to make sure that they have their full twenty days notice because you're going to get another twenty day waiting period. Along with this form, you are going to again serve them with the counter affidavit, so they have another opportunity to file that. And you're also going to start your precipy to transmit the record. This is the one that we talked about under section C. Where you've filled out certain sections but not others. This is the flip side of that. So you're going to start filling this out. You're not going to be able to fill out everything on this form. But you want to have it mostly filled out in the same form that you're going to be submitting it to the court in twenty days. So you're going to file these three documents together as one document with the notice of intention on the top. And then you are going to serve that packet on the other party. As long as you got good service of your affidavit of separation by one of those three methods, you do not need to serve again in that method. You can just serve them at their address of record by regular mail. You do just have to indicate how they've been served on a certificate of service. So for your thirty one, thirty three oh one D precipy to transmit the record on this one, you are going to go through and you're going to also check that you want a divorce complaint. You're going to now check that you are seeking grounds for divorce under section thirty three oh one D. You are going to fill in section two the same way that you filled it in for C. And now for number three, you're going to complete B instead of A. This is the date that your affidavit of separation was signed. So that first document that you filled out under D. And then the date of filing and manner of service. So the date that's on your timestamp from the prothonitary is going to go here. And then which of the three methods of service you had to affect good service. Four again is going to be, you don't have any claims pending. And then five, this time you're going to complete A instead of B. And that's going to be the date that your notice, the previous form with those three documents attached was served and the manner of service. And same thing, you're going to sign it, indicate your contact information. You're going to go ahead and attach that proposed divorce decree. And the divorce information sheet, you're going to submit that to the court. And hopefully, within a couple of weeks, if everything was done correctly, you're going to receive your divorce decree. The other party will receive a notice that the divorce decree was entered. They don't receive a copy of the actual decree from the prothonitary. So one thing, if you happen to be that receiving party and you get the notice, you can just go to the prothonitary and request a copy of your decree. And I think they charge you like sixteen dollars to give you a copy of the a certified copy of the decree. It's not the original, only the plaintiff gets that. But that is, in a nutshell, doing a basic divorce. And I saw there was one thing in the chat. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Oh, it's, will these slides be available after the presentation? Yeah, we're going to make sure that Angelina has them so that you can kind of, if you're attempting to do this on your own or an advocate attempting to help someone, you can have the instructions from the slides available to you along with the, the form packet. I don't, I, the question is, do we know what county is cheaper or a way to find out? Just about every county's prothon, we have sixty seven counties in Pennsylvania. And just about every one of them has a fee schedule published on their website. So if you really have a lot of time on your hands, you can Google every prothonitary's fee schedule. But I know my go to for a cheap divorce is usually Potter County. I think Cameron County is pretty cheap also. That's, those would be my, my quick response. I don't know if there's anywhere less expensive than that.
Any other questions out there? I know that was, that was a super comprehensive and you hit on a lot of really important points and a lot of misconceptions that people have about divorce.
I have a question.
Okay.
Go. So if, even if you were married here in Delphine County, I can get, anyone can get, I was married in Puerto Rico, but I got divorced through, in Cameron County. I did it myself. It was cheaper than Delphine. So anyone living in any county can get divorced at any other county.
As long as it's in Pennsylvania, you have to have been a resident of Pennsylvania for six months to be divorced in Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you. This, by the way, this was great. This was, I would have never thought of, um, getting into a webinar like this. Thank you, Justine. This was amazing. And thank you, Casey. While you're, for all your grateful information, and I know this will help a lot of people.
Hope so.
Guys, thank you so much for joining us. I think it was incredibly helpful, Casey. Like I learned so much. So really appreciate you coming on.
You're welcome. I'm glad, glad to be here and glad, happy you had me. Thanks.
All right. Well, that is going to conclude our presentation for today. We will have, ah, thank you so much for dropping that in. We will have more of these kind of navigating systems, navigating legal issues that are affecting women in the community. So please continue to look out for announcements about upcoming sessions that we will be having. We're hoping that this is getting out into the community and that the information that we're providing is going to be helpful, is going to educate women in the community and we're really, really grateful, Casey. I know for me, you cleared up a ton of misconceptions that I had about divorce and the process, and even knowing that attorneys will give free consultations about that.
Not all of them. A lot of them do that.
It's worth asking, right? It's a thing that they might do. It's worth asking.
Absolutely.
So we really, really appreciate it. Thank you so, so much. Let me, anything. For sure, we will save you on there. Guys, thank you so much. This was fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.